And accomplishments. So I'm just trying to figure out, I want to put that on y'all to know that we're all watching this, that this isn't just a Vestavia Hills issues anymore. That this is, this issue goes beyond just being in Vestavia. You really need to be watching what signal you are sending to the students at your school right now. You really need to be watching that because right now you're saying that they don't matter. Okay?
And there's a queer child in every state of Vestavia schools. Every single grade at every school, there is gonna be a queer child. And I want you to think about the message you are sending to each of those children.
I don't think--
They ain't no kids.
They kill kids.
Well, if your special names, okay, you don't matter.
Or Jewish.
Yeah.
Or black.
My name is April Erin Brush, also probably known as the lab lesbian that lives in Vestavia. I come by that honestly, I guess. I've lived in Vestavia for forty-two years. I graduated from Vestavia, I started first grade in Vestavia. I had Ms. Jean, who I hope is watching this and isn't crying because of what you've done to her family. But I'm sure she probably is. Um, I've known Lauren probably since middle school. Um, her and I actually went to Monta Valley together. We did our student teaching together when we were at Homewood. Um, she by far was well, way better teacher than I ever could have, would have, should have, or even conceived of thinking I could have been. Um, there was an opening when we did our student teacher that, that year. Uh, she said, "I'm gonna apply for it." I said, "Oh, never mind, I won't, 'cause I knew better." Uh, I said, "That's cool." I said, "Year later, oh, there's an opening in Vestavia." She said, "Yeah, I thought, you know, that's where I wanna go back. That's my heart, that's my soul, that's where I wanna be, that's where my family is." I said, "I shall not apply for that either." Um, 'cause I knew I wasn't gonna get the job, not over her, because she was freaking amazing. Um, I do wanna speak on a few things that I do know. I do know that, uh, Mr. Jeffers is probably rolling over at his grave because this Vision School, which was the alternative school that got a new name so we could hide people. Um, it, it was designed to help kids that were at risk. And some of those could have been LGBTQ kids like myself, because I never came out, never went to prom, never did anything, 'cause I was afraid. Um, but he's probably definitely rolling over at his grave, because this is not what the Vision School was designed and meant to do. It was, the Vision School started in 2017. It's been open for eighty months as the Vision School. And those eighty months, it has only been principled, if that's even a word, why I'm not a teacher anymore, for twenty-two of those eighty months. So fifty-eight months, it's been without a principal. It can run itself, because it's not really a thing. The students at the alternative school will never see Ms. Dressback, like they never saw Burgess, they never saw Tinker, and they never saw, well, I actually think, they actually saw Ms. Pierce, because she started it, and she kinda was passionate about it. So she's the one oddball I haven't quite figured out in the puzzle pieces. But, um, you don't have to worry about the kids at Vision, they'll never, they'll never see her. This is where they put the teachers to die, to leave, to resign, or to work out the rest of their contract. And we all know that. So rest sure that your Vision kids are safe. Um, what's not safe is the Caba Heights kids who lost the best principal they've probably ever had. Because Vestavia will lose the best teacher, probably in the top ten that they ever had. Yeah. And she was a legacy. And you know what? You've messed with the legacy family, you've messed with us all.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Scott. I'm a 2001 graduate of Vestavia Hills High School. I did not have Ms. Dressback as a teacher, but I did have her mother, Karen Jean. And I'm here tonight in gratitude of this family's dedication to education. I'm currently a licensed professional counselor here in Birmingham, and I'm a proud bisexual woman.
Yes.
And I'm gonna talk about the mental health impact of your decision tonight. Statistically speaking, there are children in this elementary school who will come out as LGBTQ in adolescence or later. That's not a question, that's a fact. They are watching you tonight and seeing an LGBTQ identified adult be persecuted for being who she is. There is a mountain of research that indicates that these types of actions are more likely to cause student depression, thoughts of suicidality, distrust of authority, and reduced academic performance. It doesn't matter if you don't listen to a single adult voice tonight. The children are watching you, and you have done real and present harm to children tonight. And I hope you all sleep well tonight.
Today, I don't know Lauren, I don't know, I barely remember her mother, but the one thing I remember most, though, is Rebel Stand Together, One Rebel.
I'm gonna keep what I have to say short. Uh, this lawyer's probably paid by the minute. So, uh, they won't listen to us. It's clear when we walked in here, they wouldn't listen to us. Um, and--
Could you give your name, please?
You don't--
It's very-- Would you give your name?
I don't have--
Would you give your name? I wanna keep my, I wanna keep my words short. They won't listen to us. It's clear from the agenda when we walked in here that they will not listen to us.
What's your name, sir?
But they are sitting here, guys, silent.
His name first.
His name first.
They're sitting here silent, because they know that if they admit the reason that they are taking these actions, that it is illegal. And the reason that there is a lawyer here is because every single person on this board needs to stay quiet, so that there's no proof that this is discrimination. Discriminating on sexual orientation is illegal, and that's why they're not speaking today. Secondly, I wanna ask you, and you're not going to answer, what the leading cause of death for queer children is? And the answer is, the leading cause of death for queer children is that they kill themselves. And that's what you're contributing. If you think that you can be on a school board and pass policies that lead to children killing themselves, you should be ashamed of yourself. And I'm thinking from my personal experience, in that I wanted to kill myself, and I attempted to kill myself, and I would have if I didn't have a gay teacher in my school.
Amen.
Sure we can't have your name? I wanna know--
Why do you ask that? Hit our name, if you wanna give--
No, that's not happening.
Don't give it a name.
We don't know, we don't know.
Hi, my name's Lane Brown, and I live in Caba Heights. And I understand, y'all has made it very clear, you're not gonna respond to any of my emails, and you're not gonna respond to questions tonight. But I need you to understand, I don't know what to tell my kindergartner when he asks me why Lauren Dressback isn't at school. When he says, "Why isn't she coming back?", I have no reason to give him. You're breaking my child's heart, and you're making it hard for me to help him understand why his teacher's not there, and she didn't get to even say goodbye.
That's really him.
Seriously, guys?
Yeah.
What am I supposed to say to him?
She's got meat bosses.
Yeah. I'd love for you to give me something to say to him.
My name's Ashley. Um, I have a first grader at Caba Heights Elementary, on the thirty-nine oh five, Wyd Oak Drive. And I just, I honestly don't see how you guys can just sit here, stone-faced, and not answer any questions, when our principal has been taken away. And my child is so sad, and the effect that it's had on other children, like when Boss-- I don't see how you guys can sit here and look the way you look, and not give us any answers. It makes no sense, no sense at all. This is like a communist country. Alabama is so far behind the times.
Yes, yes.
I was, I lived in Sulcaga, which I know you're familiar with, superintendent. And I came here, and I was so excited when I saw Ms. Dressback the first day on orientation. She had tattoos, she just looked different, she acted different, she was very enthusiastic, and I was so excited to have my child go to that school and start kindergarten there. First and only child. And now, I, I don't know how I feel about it. I mean, I, I wanted to still continue to go to the school, but the board, I'm sorry, I had no respect for you guys. Sitting here, just looking like we're aliens, like we don't know what the hell's going on. We know what the hell is going on.
We get all the--
And we're not gonna stand for it. You guys are not gonna have your job soon. And I'm, I hope you're happy with that. I hope you guys sleep well at night. So thank you for coming and, you know, making Sulcaga what it is, and bringing it here to Vestavia.
Hi, my name's Jemma Bishop. I'm a resident of Caba Heights. I'm a veteran, both Navy and the Air Force, honorably discharged. Thank you. Um, you know, I have a family that loves me. I recently visited my whole extended family, and they were all very loving and accepting. Um, back to the military days, I think of times when, you know, we ran out of engine rooms, 'cause they were on fire, and some of the brave young folks that ran in there to put those fires out and keep us safe. You know, the streets were blue during, you know, the Iran-Iraq war. Um, you know, when I look at all of you, so stone-faced, and with such resolve that you just want to make your problem go away, because Ms. Dressback is such a threat to you, it breaks my heart to think you would happily have me just be unalive and not have ever existed. Um, as with whatever percentage of LGBTQ folks that are here, and, you know, maybe there's still time. I don't know if it's a fait accompli, maybe you're so solid in your decision to let her go, just make her go away. But just think of all the people. I've served with many people of many different orientations, cultural backgrounds. Um, it's just very sad. Uh, I would like to, you know, send a message of love, but wow, it makes it difficult when, you know, people just don't want you around. Thank you.
Hello? I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but here I am. Woo! My name is Abby Skipper, and my son is a student at Caba Heights. He's in first grade. Um, with everything that's happened in the world, in schools, and to children, and especially after COVID, my husband and I were scared to send our son to school. Uh, we agonized over the decision of where he should go. We specifically moved to Caba Heights for him to attend the school that I felt was the best fit for him and would be safe for him. I know not all children have that opportunity to go to a safe school. And I felt privileged and blessed to give that opportunity to my child. Uh, the first day that I met Lauren Dressback was on Kindergarten Orientation Day, and I cannot convey to you verbally how much better she made me feel about sending my child to public school. I was sitting in the gym, and she walked out and immediately put every single parent in that gym at ease. The warmth, the dedication, the sincerity, the truth, that we knew she was speaking when she said, "Your children are safe here, and they are loved here." And when she spoke those words, I shed tears, because that was all I wanted in this world. Um, we're, we're angry, and we're hurt, because you, we feel that the board and the superintendent has hurt someone that we love, for who she loves. And that's wrong.
Absolutely.
And, um, I emailed you, Dr. Freeman, and I just specifically asked you, I told you my story that I'm telling everyone right now. I told you, um, that I was scared to send my child to school, and she put me at ease. And she continued to put me at ease. Every single morning that I would drop my child off, rain or shine, she was out in the front of the school, high-fiving him and saying, "Hey!", to my child by name. And if you have kids, you know that feeling, leaving them in the care of others, is terrifying. You don't have to try really hard to see that every single person for decades feels the exact same way about her as I do. She has touched everybody's life, because she is an amazing person. And the fact that you have not given her an answer as to why this disciplinary action has been taken and frankly punished her, the fact that we had to find out through, uh, social media, it, it feels wrong, because it is wrong. I don't think anybody minds me being up here talking.
No. We're talking.
Why is it rather hard than you? We like it that way. Lauren gave y'all six weeks to talk. All right, I will, I will respect your wishes, but you haven't respected mine.
Amen.
Hi, remember me? Do I get another three minutes, buddy?
Okay.
Why not?
Boardman.
Mr. Boardman.
Good, great. See that picture behind you, Todd? That's Caba Heights Elementary. You know what's missing from it?
Mr. Price.
Lauren.
Mr. Price, please, respect the process, respect the process.
What is the process?
Respect us.
You don't respect us or the kids.
Your process--
I didn't see anybody that came up here, so-- Come on up, come on up.
His name is Boardman, by the way, the czar gave him the title.
Hey, what's up?
Boardman.
Oh, wait, you're not an attorney, you're a lawyer.
Did I touch something? I wasn't gonna speak either. Um, my name's Frau Rogers. Or it used to be. I retired in 2020. My name's Kathy Rogers. I taught Vestavia for thirty years. I taught Lauren-- I taught-- Here's my little disingenuous, I can't taste it.
Yeah. Taste it on.
I taught Lauren, um, I started teaching in nineteen ninety-two. Let me know in my three minutes, right?
Oh, he will.
Um, it's okay. Y'all, we have to, we have to do better, so that they'll do better.
Absolutely.
In nineteen ninety-two, when I started, one of the very first things I remember about Vestavia Hills High School was Mr. Gross bringing us into-- I need you, do you remember? Bringing us into the gym one morning and telling us that a little boy had shot himself. And his mom would talk with us. And everybody knew why, but nobody would say it. And then I got to know these wonderful, beautiful, talented teachers who were my mentors and my guides. And then I wondered why when we had a, I was really naive. I wondered when we had a tailgate, or a potluck, or a retirement party, they were always by themselves. There were these wonderful teachers who were spinsters, I guess, or lifelong bachelors. We know who they were. They brought home trophy after trophy after trophy to that school. They're beloved. Some of them are immortalized in bronze plaques on the wall, but they couldn't live their lives out loud. And I thought it was getting better. Till at the end of my time, I had a rainbow sticker on my door, but I didn't need it, 'cause the kids knew I was safe. My own children would bring their friends to me if they needed a safe place. Somehow, my room was the place to come. Somehow, I, I got those kids, and that was a joy to me. But it also meant I got suicide letters. It also meant I helped kids who were sobbing, 'cause their parents were kicking them out. I thought it was getting better. And I hope it's okay to say this, but Lauren, when you were fourteen, I knew. I don't know if you-- I don't know if you knew, sweetie, but I knew. And I was so happy to think that she's living her life out loud, and that we could really be the family that everybody says we are, and that we really could provide a safe, nurturing, loving home for our teachers, and for our kids, and our staff, and everybody in the community. But I guess I'm still kinda naive. And it just breaks my heart. It makes me sad, it's embarrassing, and I think it's gonna be expensive.
I'm not even good to ask my one question. Um-- Like I said before, the love that Lauren shown, I, I cannot believe that that doesn't override any clerical or-- That's okay, I got my name. Oh, hi, how are you? Anyway, um, if it is something else, tell us. That's what I want you to tell Lauren. Oh, Mr. Boardman--
She can have mine.
Thank you.
My name's Carl Julian. Uh, I'd like to yield my time back to her. I'd like to yield my time back. I'd like to yield my time back to you.
No, no, it's okay, I'm not--
Oh, I actually don't have anything to say, I was just coming here. Yeah, I don't have anything to add, because--
I was hoping to add with you, Carl. It shouldn't have taken-- Y'all seen enough of us, I'm sure, but it shouldn't have taken that. I want you to look around this room and look at how many people, like they said, for decades, have positive things to say about this woman. Those of us who, who you have deemed as different, and who you tend to kind of hyper-sexualize for some odd reason, the, Lauren Jean's reputation speaks for itself. We may, we may color outside of your lines a little bit, okay? But at no time does that mean--
You're certainly welcome to speak, can you give your name, please?
Stop interrupting, you really--
My name's Lauren Filitieri.
We wanna hear you, it's our meeting.
She's my daughter. You'll know in a minute.
I lost my train of thought, but--
He does that on purpose.
Yeah, we may color outside of, of your lines a little bit, but coloring outside of your lines does, at no point does that ever mean that we are unprofessional. Lauren didn't just all of the, all of a sudden become over, unprofessional overnight. That doesn't happen. You started looking at her as unprofessional overnight.
My name's Carl Julian, uh, live in Caba Heights, Timberlake Road. I really wasn't planning to speak at all. I said a lot, um, and I don't have anything to add that's gonna change anybody's mind. You guys already made your decision and then allowing comments, it's really ridiculous. But, you know, for the public record, somebody needs to say something, so-- I love this city. I mean, this, this is where I grew up, that's where I raised my family. And I am tired. And the board has jurisdiction over superintendent, right? And the board has power over superintendent. We need a new superintendent. We need a new superintendent. I mean, it's gonna get expensive, it's getting embarrassing. We need a new superintendent, so--
I wasn't gonna say anything, but, um, my name is Allison Black Quinones. Five eight four six, Black Creek Drive. Um, my son and my daughter-in-law are from the front back here. I teach principles of ethical leadership here in Vestavia for Leadership Vestavia Hills, and I used to teach it for the high school, and Lauren was the sponsor of students. Saturday at the late, my daughter-in-law, who teaches at Crestline, showed me a video. And the, my very first reaction was, this is absolute, there's something, I thought you were nuts. I'm sorry, I, I said, "There's no way." There's no way, this, there's no way, this could be real. I lived here, and I raised all but one of my five children here. And I went to alternative school, 'cause I lived in foster care. Most of you that live in this town know that. And I wanna say this to the, all of you guys, 'cause many of you are my students at LDH. I know it's hard, what's going on, because you can't comment. Maybe you guys saw something we don't know, I don't know. But I do know this, when you wait this long, and I taught a couple of you in my class, when you wait this long, and when you go through this due process that I know counseling says you have to do, it puts this person in this, under this black cloud. I cannot imagine what this one was going through. I am a conservative Republican. I have probably a third of my staff where I work are transgender. My parents are gonna be so mad at me tonight for speaking up, and I want everyone in this room-- What you know, I, I just want you to know from me to all of you in this room, if I thought that the things that were wrong in our state could be solved by talking about what goes on in y'all's bedrooms, Lauren knows I would. But I want you to know something, I love all people. I do. I thought it was racist, I was taught, including all y'all. And if you feel alone, or you feel like you're being judged, always know you have a safe place to come with me, with me. And, um, I love this city, I will always love Vestavia. I, I taught them in the move-in here, they wanted to move to Mountain Brook, and I said, "Absolutely not." But I'm just ashamed and, and sad. And I think you lost a, a really great lady, and I wish that my granddaughter, my grandson, could get to meet her and have her as a principal, but they won't. But if you're gay, transgender, or anybody in this room, I don't care. I just want you to be nice to animals and people. And leave. I wish you all the blessings, I do, I wish you all the luck in the world, because that y'all is gonna, it's gonna be a long road ahead of y'all. And I appreciate you hearing me out, and I pray for Ms. Dressback and her family. I so badly wish my grandkids were gonna get to have her as an educator, and man, I wish, I wish they were bad, her children's like bad kids since I was one. If she is gonna get to teach at the alternative school, those are the luckiest kids in the world. If you tell me anything, I don't know what I will do. Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Hi, good evening, my name is Dr. Andrew. I'm a resident of Vestavia Hills, um, but unlike a lot of you here, I'm not from Vestavia. I don't have kids in the school system, but I did move here by choice, because I found it to have a very vibrant community, a very wonderful, beautiful city. I just, I've loved living here in the past two years. Um, I don't know Lauren, but what I do know is that what's happening here tonight is despicable. Not what's happening here, what's happening here. I grew up in a very small town in North Alabama. Um, I grew up queer, but I did not know that until I was about twenty-one, or at least I didn't come to terms with it until I was about twenty-one. And for those of you, especially you on the school board, who really don't know what that is like, it has a drastic impact on your mental health to hide that, and to have people showing you time and time again that your existence, your very existence on this earth is wrong. And that's what we are doing here. We are telling our children in Vestavia Hills that their existence is wrong. And as someone said earlier, um, your mental health suffers. So what I do wanna say is, to the queer children who are watching this right now, because there are queer children watching this right now, watching your actions, I wanna say to you that it is okay to be gay, lesbian, trans, queer, et cetera. Your existence is not wrong, and it doesn't matter who you are. We love you. This school board does not speak for your community. Your community loves you, and it's going to be okay, it's going to be better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Villarreal. I am from Tuscaloosa County. Um, and I just looked at the beliefs, um, that are stated by this district, and it says, "Each person deserves to be safe, diversity strengthens community, all people have the right to learn without limits." How is this keeping LGBTQ people safe, when you are presumably firing somebody who identifies that way? Diversity strengthens community. How is this promoting diversity, when you're saying it's not okay to be different? All people have the right to learn without limits, when, when there is a principal who has done so much good for kids? How are you okay with getting rid of her, so that kids have less opportunities to learn? And finally, I want to reiterate just a small point, because I think it's important. Let's say, for the sake of argument, you are not firing this teacher because she identifies a certain way. Then what, what are we hiding? Why is there not more transparency, and what is the, what is the big secret about? That's what I wanna know.
James Decker. Caba Heights resident, I have, have four children, go through Caba Heights Elementary, and on through Vestavia school system, and it has been absolutely wonderful. And I just wanted to thank the board-- And I just wanted to thank the board for what y'all do. I wanna thank Dr. Freeman especially for what you do, and that's that you continue doing your job thoroughly, and as you have here, looked into this situation and done your due diligence. And we really appreciate that. And I think, I've heard a lot of comments, an interesting one, that we, I think we should all remember, teachers change, your child grows up, goes to the next grade, gets a new teacher, goes to the next school, gets a new principal. But do you know who stays constant in your child's life?
God.
God. I was gonna say, that's an even better answer, thank you, but I was gonna say, parents. And I think this is a great chance to be parents, and raise your children up through this, and be present in their lives, and help them through whatever they face. And I, I can't compare it to what everybody's going through, everybody has your own situation, and there is another side to every case, right, to every issue. But I want the board to know, there are plenty of residents, if you need some members out there, who support you, and we appreciate you. They have better things to do.
Hello. My name is Angel Johnson. I live at 617 Hickory Knoll, Homewood, Alabama. I am 45 years old. I am queer, and I am non-binary, trans mask. I'm telling you all these things because one of the beliefs that Matthew did not mention under what is written for you guys, is that transparency inspires trust. Right now, you guys are not being very trustful. You're not being transparent. What you are telling the children of Vestavia is what I've been telling people about Vestavia for the past 40 years. Is that Vestavia is not kind to those that do not look and believe and like people the way that they think they should. My daughter asked, why can we not move to Vestavia? Because she did her own research and saw that Vestavia schools were some of the best schools in Alabama. I told her, no, we will not move there, because we will not be accepted in that community. And right now, your lack of transparency is ringing out very clear to the other citizens of Vestavia, of Jefferson County, of the wider Birmingham area, and Alabama, that you do not acknowledge or appreciate the diversity of all of us.
My name is Patrick Gilbert. I live in Kahabe Heights, I work in Kahabe Heights. I coach baseball teams for Vestavia. I, I want to take just an opportunity in a second to, again, the board, I can't imagine what it feels like to sit in the seat. I can't, I can't imagine that all the things that you've been through, and the things that you're doing. I understand that not everything can be aired out for the public to know. What we've heard tonight from everybody in this room is how much they love Miss Stressback. I have two kids currently in Kahabe Heights, I have two more who are about to be in Kahabe Heights. For one glorious year, all four of my kids will be in Kahabe Heights, which is gonna be great. I can only assume, and we all know what assuming gets you, that if, this has to be some other reason than her preferences. I believe there are probably other teachers and other faculty members who, who are gay, who have openly said that, and yet they are still happily employed with the city of Vestavia. So, as an assumption, I can only assume that there's something different. Dr. Freeman, you and I talked about communication before.
What, you talked to this guy?
And I believe you, and I've mentioned to you, that communication is always key. It's the one that kills all rumors, it's the one that kills all questions that are going on. I know you may not be able to communicate accurately what's going on totally now, but I hope at some point, we can communicate exactly a little further as to why she was being moved from one school to another. I think communication is, is absolutely key in all walks of life. So, I would encourage you guys to find an ability to communicate that well, so that we can have an understanding and have a comfort of why she was, why she's being moved. Thank you.
Let us know.
No law that says they can't right now. It probably is.
Hi, folks. My name's Casey. I live in Kahabe Heights. I have three kids also in Kahabe Heights. And I'm from these gentlemen here. We obviously have differing opinions on things, and that's fine, I have no problem with that. I know you said, can't imagine sitting in this seat, it's, I can't imagine sitting in y'all's seat. To be honest with you. Ah, geez, it, 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 I've known, I've known Miss Stressback for a long time. My, my wife is dear, dear friends with her, and I went to school with her, went to school with some of you guys. And it, it, my kids are 10, and I've got eight-year-old twins, and it, my, my daughter and my, my two sons love Miss Stressback like everybody else does, and, um, man, it, it breaks my heart, but I'm gonna have to tell them the truth. And that's the, that's the tough thing. That's all I gotta say, I mean, that's tough. I'm not, I'm not to tell them the truth. I mean, like I said, you guys may have something that you're not telling us, and, hey, that's fine. But it'd be, like Patrick said, communication. There's, there's zero. And, and when you, when you have zero communication, everybody's gonna ask you what you hide. And, and if you're not hiding something, it's really easy to say, this is the problem we had, and this is why she's gone. And it's real easy if there's nothing to hide. And y'all all were asked which way you voted. You, you all denied to tell us, and that's, I don't know if that's your right or not, I can't tell you that. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. But if, if it's not finalized, and y'all don't, and y'all have an opinion that you're not saying yet, y'all have an opinion that you're not saying because you're scared to say something in public, say it. I mean, it's, we, we live where we live now, and, and this is gonna get really big. And it's scary to think that you guys are gonna get what you're getting coming to you, and it's, I'm just saying, communication, all right, guys? And like I said, I like so many of y'all, and, um, thank you.
Hi, I'm Callie Comer. Graduated from Vestavia in 2012. And in the time that I've been alive, I remember Vestavia being in national news twice. Once, when we finally decided to change our official flag from the Confederate flag to a commissioned Vestavia Hills High School flag. And a second time, when John Oliver decided to tell us that Colonel Rev is still racist. And I think for a third time, it's gonna be how y'all have conducted this. I don't tell people I'm from Vestavia when I meet people out of state. I tell people I'm from Birmingham, because whenever I tell people I'm from Vestavia, they know those two stories. And it's really hard to love the city I'm from when this keeps happening.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I've already had my time, but I wanna say this, they're being silent because they're counting on this to blow over. They're counting on us to forget that this happens. They think that if they say nothing, that we'll just walk out of here and go on with our lives. We can't forget this, and we won't.
We really do appreciate everybody coming to our... And sharing your hearts with us. Everybody has a right to do that, and we appreciate you coming and being here, expressing your concern. And we will continue to honor that if you wanna come and speak. Every meeting, we appreciate you all. We love our community as well.
At every meeting, y'all heard that.
Can I say something, sorry? I was, I actually just came to listen, because I saw this all blow up on Facebook and kind of thought, there must be something else to the story, I wanna go listen. I went to Kahabe Heights when it was a county school, and then we were annexed in, I went to Vestavia for high school, graduated there with some other people in the room, had a good experience, went to Alabama, lived in DC, moved back here by choice, back to Birmingham. I currently live in Mountain Brook, I'm sorry, but I do live in the Kahabe Heights part, so I feel like I'm very close. My name is Callie Martin McNutt. And most of my family went to Vestavia, or is at Vestavia, has kids at Vestavia, et cetera. Anyway, so I basically just came here to listen, try to understand, it's a call for transparency, I think. I understand why you're not speaking, so I, you know, it is what it is. That's all I'm saying. I also was wondering who does your PR and crisis communications, I also own a magazine. But I just, you know, hopefully there's more to the story, because it doesn't, it doesn't add up right now. So, that's my call, is I had a great experience at Vestavia. Also, Kahabe Heights and Gresham, when they were county schools, were fantastic. My parents actually chose to go there over Mountain Brook, because at the time, it was the highest ranking school that has some actual diversity. So, with that said, good luck in your decision.
All right, we appreciate you coming, meetings are...
Is there anyone who will speak to us about the meeting, about the transfer of Stressback? Why would she transfer? Is it because of her sexual orientation? I mean, the public wants answers, is the alternative school students, are they in danger? Are you not going to respond to your parents? Don't the parents deserve to know the details of this transfer, why it's happening? Excuse me, I have done everything that I can to report the facts. Why are you mad about, why are you, why are you yelling at me?